I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Favre School Committee from Monday, June 23rd. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie?
Here.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The open meeting law, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person making audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. We have two letters tonight for citizens input. The first one is Taylor Perry, Aberdeen Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please, Deb.
Good evening, school committee members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Taylor Perry and I am a parent of a student in the Fall River Public Schools residing at 105 Aberdeen Street. I am ready to express my deep concern regarding the decorum observed during recent school committee meetings. While I understand the complexities of policy discussions, I have consistently been disappointed by the lack of decorum and the apparent prioritization of personal agendas over the well-being of our students. The current dynamic fosters an environment where constructive dialogue is overshadowed by power struggles and personal attacks, leaving parents feeling unheard and disrespected. The perception that individual opinions are valued based on titles and credentials rather than merit is particularly troubling. The mayor at a meeting when was pointed out on his decorum exchange where "you can't tell me what to do" comment was made between committee members is a prime example of the unprofessional conduct that undermines the trust and confidence the community has in its leadership. Such behavior is unacceptable in the public forum, especially given the presence of concerned parents and the crucial nature of the decisions being made. As a parent, I am consistently felt my concerns regarding student education and welfare have been disregarded. The lack, the current lack of collaboration effort and the seemingly self-serving dynamics within the committee actively prevents effective problem-solving and meaningful engagement with the community. The focus should be on collaborative decision-making that prioritizes the needs of students and families. I urge the committee to prioritize respectful communication, collaborative problem-solving, and transparency in its proceedings. The actions of this committee directly impact the education environment for our children. It is imperative that we work together to foster an atmosphere of trust, respect, and mutual understanding. Our children are observing these interactions and learning from the examples set. I sincerely hope you will address these concerns immediately. Time to listen to a parent. Taylor Perry.
Thank you. Next up, David Olivera, Robeson Street.
Members of the committee, so I guess Ms. Lawrie isn't going to step down as a member of school committee, that she's, was elected to serve our kids and help this district, something she has failed to do. A true leader doesn't walk off on a meeting because a member of the school committee had questioned. Well, he be a member or not of that committee, that's a walk-off of the job. Two, you knew there was a meeting again, and you raised your hand to serve this school district, and yet you pull a no-show because of a Karen Reed case. I'm tired of this school committee of four complaining about how long a meeting is. Sorry that you get paid for. You don't like it, then step down as well. This school district is hurting. We need leaders to help guide and support our superintendent for this school district, and if it wasn't for Colin and Kevin asking the questions, then it'd be a free fall. I already, I don't trust the mayor as it is. Good night, Dave Olivera.
Thank you. Item number three is the superintendent's report. Ms. Dr. Curly?
Sure. I wanted to give two updates, one, a hiring update, and then also a transportation update. Since our last meeting on June 9th, we have been, we have had 13 resignations, including seven teachers and a paraprofessional, one administrator, as well as four non-union positions. During that same time, we've had six new hires, including three teachers, two principals, and one vice principal. In terms of a transportation update, I just wanted to share with the public some information I shared with the school committee coming out of last week. Given our ongoing efforts to keep our transportation costs down in the district while operating within current policy, we've been exploring multiple avenues, including some discussions with Serta around middle school transportation. We're doing this simultaneous with the change in the distance calculation in terms of our existers in walkers riding policy and the increased transportation that's been necessitated as a result of that change in calculation. So, we have some things that we're considering right now. One is related to Morton students living in the Bedford and Tremont Street area who would walk to the corner of Bedford and North Main. It's about a half-mile walk, and they would take the Serta North Main Street bus that drops off right in front of Morton. This bus is actually already being used by some current students who actually live within walking distance but choose to use the public transportation. If we were to do that, it would eliminate the need to add a bus for Morton, and it would be a savings of about $100,000. We're looking at the possibility of removing a bus stop for Morton students who live along the North Main route, another one, and that Serta currently already travels. And again, students would get on at one of the Serta stops on North Main and be dropped off in front of the school, also a savings of $100,000. We have CUS students who live off Bay Street who, because of the change in calculation, now qualify for transportation, and these are students who would be living on South Main who qualify. They could either walk to Bay Street or jump on a Bay Street Serta bus, or could get on a South Main Street Serta bus and get off at South Main Globe. That would also be a $100,000 savings. And then in addition, I just wanted to mention that we will be adding a Viveris, a bus to Viveris due to the number of new students that now qualify. That would be an additional cost of $100,000, and then we'll be adding a bus to Henry Lord for another $100,000. So, we're exploring some avenues for savings at the same time as adding some buses.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I don't know if the HR director's here today, but out of the 13 resignations, how many completed exit interviews?
I'm going to go out, he is not able to join us this evening. I do not believe any exit interviews have been conducted with those, but I will get an update.
Thank you. I think it's just important, and you can cross off the names, I don't care about the names, but as a committee, when we're voting on contracts, we're creating policy, it'll be beneficial for myself to have a copy of the reasons why individuals are leaving the district, just to hear from themselves, if it's an issue with morale, if they're leaving for money, if it's something specific. I like to know as one member, so I can be more educated and informed. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just a few comments. The, Dr. Curly, you just mentioned about the busing. I thought we got an email to say this was very preliminary and just throwing it out there that we're looking at it?
Yeah.
But now we advertise it to the public, so I'm wondering if...
Nope. I started by saying, nope. I just wanted to share what I had shared with the school committee. I feel like I'm often prompted to share kind of preliminary plans or some thoughts with the public, and I would welcome, you know, it's an opportunity to share and just get some feedback from people. Yeah.
The, well, I have plenty of questions on that, the Serta bus in general, but I didn't think it was on the agenda for us to discuss, but the, what you mentioned about moving from to Serta bus, is that for required transportation? Like, I'm trying to figure out, why is the school department involved? If they, if a student can just go to the corner and jump on a regular Serta bus, is that our responsibility?
No. So, we already have students who don't qualify for transportation, but they're using some of these Serta buses. We recognize that some students for whom transportation has to be provided, if they, if they want to take us up on it, because they live outside of walking distance of the school, there is an opportunity for some of those students to hop on the same buses. And so, the same, like, right now with Durfee High School, we have students that would require transportation because they live outside of walking distance. We partner with Serta and generally would buy the bus passes if they were for sale. We would, we would buy the bus passes for students in order to provide them that transportation. Right now, the Serta bus, the Serta buses are free, so we're not paying for them. We are looking to do the, potentially, the same kind of thing with some of the middle school routes.
I just think if it's a requirement that we have to transport somebody in the school committee, we need to take a vote on that, not just jump on a Serta bus because we think it's, you know, gonna save us some money. I, I think that we need to differentiate between a student that just lives far away and they want to take a Serta bus, they can take that without the school committee. When we get involved to try to say we're gonna save money, that implies that we actually are spending money on a bus for those children that we're gonna save. That's where the savings would come, correct?
Temporarily, because eventually the Serta buses will not be free, and we would have to buy the bus passes.
Right, but I'm saying, we're currently paying, if you're saying we're saving $100,000, which you just advertised.
That would be a savings of one, we, if we didn't...
Where is $100,000 being spent, I guess is my question? On a bus? A yellow bus?
Well, right now, we have it budgeted, potentially, to be spending that. If we didn't have to spend it, then we wouldn't be spending it.
With what is my question? The $100,000 budgeted is for what? It's for a yellow transportation bus?
Well, it would be for transportation, an estimated, at an estimated cost of $100,000 for that particular bus. And if we were using Serta buses to provide the same transportation, then most immediately, we wouldn't have to pay. Eventually, when bus passes are not free, we would be buying bus passes. It would still cost less than the $100,000 that we'd be spending.
But the $100,000 is for a bus, a bus route that we would have to add or currently have in order to save $100,000, that estimate is because we would have a bus?
Right.
My only thing is that I don't believe that we should be just adding a, you go take a Serta bus, and that's a wash. That's what I'm saying.
If, but would it, I guess it potentially means, so if we were paying for the buses and we were buying bus passes for students, we would be paying for students to be transported because there'd be a fee attached. In the interim, when those buses are free, we just wouldn't have to buy the bus passes, but eventually, we'd be buying bus passes.
I guess I'm, I'm just, maybe it's me. I don't believe we were paying for bus passes for middle school. That's, I guess the difference is what I'm trying to...
No, we weren't. You're right. We've only used them for the high school.
So, this is now saying we're gonna save $100,000 from middle school buses that we weren't providing, or that I don't know that we've provided. I'm trying, I'm mixing something up to say where we're gonna save $200,000, $300,000 in transportation on something like that. I just, I'm totally confused.
Mr. Patchico, if you can help us?
Yes, I, I'm, basically, we're exchanging because we are adding buses. So, with the new, with the new distance, we are adding buses. So, what this is doing is offsetting the cost of those buses.
For middle school?
For everybody. Wherever this, wherever the difference is, is where we're adding buses. So, the superintendent just said we're adding two, we're technically, we're taking two away and adding two more. So, right now, it's dead even. Dead even. It's not costing us more, but it's not costing us less. As these, as the crow flies, so to speak, is gone, we're gonna add buses because some students are gonna be qualified for buses that didn't have qualif, that didn't qualify before. So, they are, we are gonna add buses on.
So, we're required to add those buses based on the distance?
Yes.
I'm of the belief that we don't transfer that situation to a Serta bus on a regular bus route. Like, I don't think those things can, I don't think we can take credit for saying, "We provided the transportation to that family by a Serta bus," just because you jumped the corner.
We do it at the high school, every day. 700 students.
But we don't, that's where we would either pay, or a student that needed it, you'd actually have a yellow bus?
We would pay. No, we would pay. If, if Serta wasn't available, if we didn't have trippers, we'd be paying for all those buses. 700 students, 14 buses a day. We'd be paying for that.
So, anybody that's over to this high school, over a mile and a half, they eligible for transportation?
Yes.
In the high school?
Yes. But, with that being said, because the transportation is free, currently, we're not buying bus passes. Before it was free, we were buying bus passes to students from Durfee and from RPA.
I just recall never hearing the comment that everybody that was 1.5 miles away from this high school was eligible for a free bus pass or transportation. Never, I've never heard that. I heard students that were low-income, we would give a threshold for them. I've never heard that everyone's eligible for, I thought there was a differentiation between grades.
They weren't always free. The bus passes weren't always free. Students did pay for bus passes.
No, I'm saying that we were required to pay for transportation. I, I don't recall hearing that over my entire career here at the school.
I've been here for nine years, and Serta's been providing that bus service for the nine years.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the eligibility for the student to mandate...
I believe that's, that's part of the policy.
So, we're mandated to transport every student that lives a mile and a half or one mile away from Durfee? Is that what you're saying?
The, the state reg is two, two miles.
Two, okay, so...
But we do one and a half.
But we do do one and a half, yes.
So, everyone at this high school that's two, two miles, mile and a half, whatever number you want to use, they're entitled to transportation paid for by the school department?
If they so choose to use it, yes.
I, I just think, you know, that's news to me. I'm not really a fan of that Serta piece, you know, but that's for another time. But I thought this was just preliminary, and now it's out, and I guess I'm just stuck on that.
No, but it is preliminary, and I'm just looking for some feedback. I'm not...
You know, I, I tell you, I, I thought that's what the email was for, but when we say it here, I just think it's, people are gonna assume that those things are happening, almost like it's a done deal.
No, well, I think, I'm, I'm hoping that we're making it clear right now that it's not, and I do think that, obviously, I would expect some input from everybody. What I didn't want to, I wanted to share the information publicly. I didn't want members of the committee to hear it for the first time during my update, so I, I looked to share it, you know, in the weekend.
Yep, I understand. I just, it's still in the preliminary stages, so...
Yes.
The, my colleague asked a question about the HR director, and he's not here. I look on the agenda, we have about 50 or 60 contracts, and isn't that his job as the executive director of human resources to weigh in and be present for discussions with the school committee on all of these contracts, the ups, the downs, the what's happened?
So, I think, generally speaking, like, the schedules of my staff are not consulted. We, you know, the committee is polled for availability, and so, this got posted when he was not available. I, I don't know.
I don't see how we should be even entering into these conversations without the person who's the one that's supposedly the lead negotiator on it, but it sounds like this is just the same we had a month ago. We had, we scheduled a meeting without the attorney. I think there's some kind of communication lacking. It's not your fault, Madam Superintendent, but once again, we have the executive director of HR not here to answer the questions here or in executive session, and I think that's a problem. Relative to the hires, the new hires, the, I had mentioned this before about the retro payments for staff, have they all been paid, and have we rectified the Step 2 for All and the Step 12, 10 to 12 issue? Not sure if...
Yes.
He's mouthing answers, is maybe the microphone's there?
Yes. It's all been...
So, everyone's on Step 2, and anybody that was hired on Step 10 is Step 12. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up on transportation? I know the superintendent's looking for some feedback. I wanted to, just so, I don't know, it's a Mr. Patchico question, just so I have an understanding now. So, right now, at Durfee High School, students outside of the transportation scope can take a Serta bus. Could you just explain how it is right now at Durfee?
So, they're, they're well aware of the fact that they can take that bus. There were students who were transported formally with yellow bus service, but they are available. Those buses are available. They're called trippers. They do not stop at the terminal. They run directly across the city from different areas of the city to Durfee High School. They do exactly the same thing on the way home.
Thank you. But they're not meant, we're not contracted with Serta. This is not us contracting with Serta.
It's considered a route. It's considered a route. It's not exclusive to Durfee High School. So, if someone needed to get from, to BCC, for instance, they could jump on a, on a tripper because they would know that that is coming straight towards this way.
So, I guess my feedback would come in for this program if we're expanding it to the middle schools. How does the data look right now at the high school level with attendance or with tardiness, specifically with tardiness? Do we ever run into issues with the buses? Students coming in tardy because of the bus routes, has that been an issue at the high school level?
The only thing I could add to that is, is the fact that this is a tripper, right? So, this runs directly to Durfee, but almost every, everywhere those trippers are, there were route buses.
Sure.
And the difference would be the route bus would run from, I'll use Bay Street for an example. It would run from the Tiverton Line to the terminal if it wasn't a tripper. It would run to the terminal, and then at the terminal, they would jump on a bus that would get them to Ellsbury Street. So, they, if they are, if they're not at school because they missed the tripper, there were plenty of options all day long. I think they run about every 20 minutes to a, to a half an hour.
No, I understand that. I guess, I don't even think you'd be able to answer this, Mr. Patchico. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, do we have any issues right now at the high school level? Are we running into, let's just say, students coming in late, the buses are breaking down? Is it, we, we don't have to have an answer right now, but if we're going to be taking a vote on this, it's something I, I think's very prudent, if we can just find out if we're running into attendance issues with students that take the tripper buses. And last question I would have on this is with the, with the high, with the Serta for the high school level, did we take, my colleague to my far left brought up the point that we're, we should, we should take a vote on this, and I agree. When this program started at the high school level, did, I don't know what year that was, did the school committee take a vote on that?
You will get that answer to you if we can find it, Mr. ... I think we're doing it, when I was here, we were doing it, so it's more than 10 years ago. Yeah.
I appreciate it. You.
Thanks. Next, we have?
Mr. Chairman, I can't imagine the school committee even needing to take a vote on such a measure. I'm, I'm appalled at this overarching questions because, I mean, the superintendent put it out there as a preliminary, and that's in order for them to be transparent, for all of us to really understand. But, Mr. Chairman, if I recall my days at Durfee, after school in the office, a parade of kids would come in and would give bus passes out to them as needed. It's a humanitarian gesture, and it's just the way that our transportation in the city has worked, and especially because this building is situated in the far north end of the city and, and makes it a lot easier for a kid to be able to connect up with a, with a straight bus or a tripper bus. So, I'm actually appalled by this line of questionings. I yield.
Okay, thank...
Mr. Chair.
Let, let's just get on to the agenda, please, guys.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia, can we make this quick, please?
Yeah, I'll try to make it quick, but when my colleague to my right wants to make accusations and throw wits around, like, "I'm appalled at how dare somebody ask a question about transportation," I have to respond. At the end of the day...
Can we let Ms. Agia speak? We should have...
Mr. Dias, please. Go ahead. Mr. Agia has the floor.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Di, Mr. Agia has the floor.
As, as an individual speaking, we don't need somebody moaning and groaning to my right.
Mr. Agia, you have the floor. Go ahead.
The question that I was asking was to actually make sure that we're giving the proper transportation to all kids, that not anything about, well, would, how appalling it is to ask these questions. I find that to be appalling. But at the end of the day, when we have, when we have an issue, we, I think we all need to have a, either a meeting specifically with the topic being Serta transportation, so we can determine whether it's, the questions that I ask, I think were very valid. Are they eligible for transportation? When they come to sign up at the parent center, do we tell them that they're eligible for transportation? What are the options? Those type of things. Valid, totally valid questions. We have situations with the middle school where kids are gonna now have to maybe take two buses. Whatever it is, I think we need a presentation so we know exactly what it is. I'm not opposed to it. I thought we were spending $300,000 on, you know, Serta transportation, but at some point, we have to get it right. I've also, for many years, said, "I don't think the Serta tripper routes are working for Durfee." I've personally, over the years, driven behind a Serta bus where the kids are jammed in there like sardines on certain ones. If the bus ever stops, the kids are gonna go flying through the intersection, not right down the lane. It's not safe. So, I've had those questions for many years. So, we're just doing it on the cheap because Serta can do it, which is why I say, "Is it just for money, or is it for the better and the right transportation?" Has nothing to do with trying to debate whether, you know, you should've said this or not. I appreciate you coming in and bringing it to our attention. I just didn't want it to be final because I think we need to have those discussions. And quite frankly, if it costs more money to do the right transportation, I'd rather do the right transportation. I yield. Thank you.
Let's go to the minutes. Mr. Dias, quickly, because we have a lot to cover tonight, please.
I'll be very quick, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Very quick. And this, Mr. Agia actually took most of the words out of my mouth. The only thing I will say, we had a citizen's, citizen's input that was mentioned today that spoke about decorum, and the superintendent was looking for feedback. I thought the line of questioning was pretty non-controversial. I think we really, as a committee, just stopped the theatrics and the complaining. When members of this committee ask questions, it's nauseating, and it really needs to end. It's been happening for way too long.
Okay.
Please stop it. I yield.
Let's go. Approval of minutes, number four.
Motion to approve.
Do I have, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I, I'll read the minutes. Approval of the regular school committee meeting from 5:12. Approval of the minutes for the policy subcommittee meeting for 5:22. Approval of the minutes for the policy subcommittee for 5:27. And approval of the minutes for the special education, alternative education, and early education subcommittee from 5:29. And approval of the minutes for the special meeting of the, of the school committee from 6:02. I have a motion, a second, discussion. Mr. Corey?
I'd like to put a hold on 4-3.
Okay. Hold on 4-3. Anything further? Let's vote on the other ones, please. Deb, would you please call the roll? We're holding 4-3.
Correct. Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Corey on 4-3.
So, as far as the approval of the minutes for subcommittee meeting, for policy subcommittee meeting on May 27, as a chair of that subcommittee, I was not informed of the guest who appeared at the meeting, and that is a usurp of my chairmanship of that subcommittee. And when they want to talk about decorum, or they want to talk about transparency, then there was no decorum or transparency in the fact that I was not informed of the guest to appear at the subcommittee meeting on that issue. That needs to be really, really, we need to communicate on this board and work...
Mr. Chairman?
I am, I have...
Let him finish.
I have the floor, sir.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I have the floor, sir.
Point of order?
I have the floor.
Mr. Chairman?
What's the point of order?
Point of order is, how does this relate to the minutes?
The minutes, the minutes relate to the fact that...
Let, let the chair make a termination.
Mr. Corey, the point of order is the relationship to the minutes for 4-3. Go ahead. Stay on the 4-3 minutes.
Stay on the 4-3 minutes. Needed to be informed of the process of that meeting and the procedure of that meeting, and I was not. I was not. My chairmanship was usurped on that meeting. I yield.
Okay. Let's vote on the approval of the minutes for the policy subcommittee meeting from 5:27. Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion, Deb, call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Number five, contracts. Now, we usually do this in botches. The first... The first one is new. I'm assuming that contains all of the Lake Shore learning materials. Does anybody want to hold on any of those?
All of them, please.
All of them, okay. So let's hold them all, and then when we go to the continuation, Mr. Dias, do you have a hold on the college board also?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start with the first one. Mr. Dias, Metropolitan Mediation Services for $45,000, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wait for the vote to come up. So, did we seek three quotes for the service?
So for Metropolitan, it's on a Mass State contract. It's actually an exemption, Mass MGL 30B, Section 1B, Section 22. It's in relation to training, educational, or career development services to employees of a governmental body.
Oh, there's, okay, thank you. But I do, just on the substance, because I had to go through the contract, and I'm just unsure if this is for a specific situation or if it's general training, what's the purpose of this contract and who are we training with it?
This is mediation training that we are providing to all of our support staff across the district as a tiered intervention. We've not offered official training around peer conflict, peer mediation, and conflict resolution, and so we are training our SEL liaisons, vice principals, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, and did I say vice principals?
Think so.
In the mix. So it's a two-day training. We've completed one of those days, July, June 10th and 11th, and tomorrow will be the second eight-hour training.
I'm glad we're being proactive, and I appreciate you for bringing that forward. I guess, what kind of issues are we running into? Like, what types of mediation would this be covering?
What types of mediation? So we are training our staff in strategies to be able to support with mediation as a tool within our MTSS toolbox.
Okay.
For our staff to be trained in the skill of mediation.
Okay, no, I was looking for that. Thank you. I yield. Motion to approve.
Hold on. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Corey.
Dr. Bronhardt, no, I'm very happy to see this, but I, when the bullying law was passed, we used to provide active mediation services within the middle schools and the high school. But when the bullying law got passed, some of the regulations changed, and they actually stripped mediation away from us on those cases and created a different procedure in regard to the bullying that occurred. So is this bringing mediation back or is it in, is it beside the bullying policy as well? I'm happy to see that mediation is back because it was one of my practices that I thought worked extremely well in conflict resolution with, you know, pre-teens and teens. It worked very, very well, so I don't know if you know anything about that.
I'm not sure about what you're referring to with mediation being removed as it relates to bullying prevention and intervention.
Yeah.
But as it relates to the flow of public schools and leveraging and using mediation as a tool in our toolbox to be able to support students with understanding differences of opinion, conflict resolution, and really being able to use this as a strategy and a consistent tool across all of our schools. So we were able to pay for it through the mental health grant. The Metropolitan Mediation Services is a partner of ours through the Brookline Center, which is also part of the Cartwheel Collaboration, and so they've been a trusted partner through that experience, and thus far, the training has been well received by staff.
Well, like I said, I'm happy to see it back again because I was really frustrated when we were instructed, "No more mediation. You can't proceed this way anymore." I remember those instructions, they were fairly black and white, you know, and I remember being disappointed by that procedural change, but I'm very happy to see that mediation services are back in the toolbox again. Thanks, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Can we get either a paragraph or one pager relative to what my colleague mentioned, whether that's even valid or not?
Yeah, no, I think...
He sounds like he's saying he knows it happened. I'm looking out there, and I think Dr. Bronhardt would say that we're still doing mediation, so there's some disconnect between what my colleague said and what she's saying and what reality is, I think.
I think that what I'm hearing is specific to bullying. I think there's this element of, if bullying is substantiated, we can't take the person who's been bullied and say, "We're gonna, you guys are gonna work it out." I think that isn't one of the steps, and I don't think that Dr. Bronhardt is referring to the use of mediation in respect to bullying, substantiated bullying. So I think both things are true.
That makes sense.
That clarifies it. Thank you.
So let's have a vote on the Metropolitan Mediation Services. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next up is Lake Shore Learning Materials, Mr. Dias.
Did we get three quotes?
It's on the Mass State contract, OFF 52.
Did we, so they're a blanket provider?
Yes.
They are, and did we seek out two quotes as a blanket provider?
So when we use state contract, we use two or three different criterias. One of the criterias is availability of product, which is state allowed. So if you're looking for 17 widgets and this company does not provide that particular widget but provides others, is it a comparable comparison? So we do comparisons of what the other products are that we're looking for as a second criteria with other bidders on the state contract, and then the third criteria is obviously price.
So we put out RFQ?
We don't have to put out an RFQ when we're using state contract. We just do that comparison. But we do do RFQs based on items we can't get off of state contract, but we do do comparatives.
Were there multiple?
There's only one other vendor, but the availability from that other vendor was not, wouldn't be ready for September.
Okay, so we just don't just look at price?
It's not just price, no.
Okay. And that's a motion to approve.
Mr. Dias, while they're both up there, could, the next one is the exact same thing on Lake Shore Learning.
I'm assuming it's both Lakeshores, I'm assuming same thing.
So it's just a different project, so they're both going to Bishop Conley, but the needs of these two groups that are moving to Bishop Conley were different. The areas that they were in were much smaller, so this is the ancillary product that's going to be moved that we didn't necessarily, we have, the classrooms that are being moved, this is the stuff that wouldn't fit in those classrooms that we never bought prior to.
No, I understand, and your expert opinion is what we're purchasing is a good price, you would say, for what we're getting?
The product is a good product also, so the pricing is good. The product is, it's a quality made, a company that makes everything that they sell, and the quality is very good, and they stand behind what they sell.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Motion to approve both Lake Shore contracts.
I have a motion to approve both Lakeshores. Motion, a second. Mr. Aguirre.
So when you're looking at the state bid list, I think there's something probably, maybe another, for another time, but I think getting an explanation in more detail what the state bid list is, I believe that the state bid list doesn't prohibit you from getting three quotes.
It doesn't.
So I think what my colleague to my far right is looking at is, we see a lot of things come through, and I think it's a valid question when he's saying, "Do you get three quotes?" But I'm guessing that you also have a mechanism to check these every now and again, or, you know, so you're not getting, just because it's on a state bid list and, you know, you can get it cheaper with three quotes, I think we should at least get some one pager which will, I think, eliminate some of these questions because I'm sure he's going to ask these questions over and over, but if we actually have an explanation that says we are, the state bid list is getting a price for everybody at a reduced rate and a fair rate, whatever, and then you said, "Hey, I didn't like that price, so we went off for three quotes. I'm looking at the two of these, and one's 24, one's 35. Is it matter if it's $50,000 or over?" You know, that's what would be in a one pager is, are we making sure that we're not circumventing our policies but also getting a good bang for our buck, which is what I think we should do?
Yeah, and I keep misspeaking about state bid because I keep getting corrected by a whole bunch of people that it's state contract, so it is a state contract that they have with all these individual companies who actually bid on what the state is looking for. So it is a state contract that we're looking at and not state bids. The state does go out to bid, and then these contracts are all set up so that these companies can't charge us more than what they're agreed to with the state.
Thank you. Thank you. I yield.
Very quickly, just to my colleague's point, if even like a little cheat sheet just explaining like these different things, so when I'm going through the batches and I have a question or two on, like a batch or something like that, then, or with the contracts coming up, if we just have like a cheat sheet that we can just plug in those answers quickly, to my colleague's point, then there would be less questions on that. I yield. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the two Lakeshores. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And finally, the last contract is a continuation, the college board. Mr. Dias.
Same question to the last, I'm prepared.
College Board is the sole source, so they're the ones, they're the only ones that can provide us with that service.
Did we seek out three bids?
They are the ones that provide the test, the college board, the sole source.
Is it like some sort of state?
They're the only vendor, they're the only vendor that can provide that.
So it's like how like MAS can only provide certain trainings or something, so it's like, all right.
It's for the cost associated with testing, SATs, PSATs, and things like that.
So they're the only company that...
College Board owns it, yeah. They're the people who do it.
Okay. I yield. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Mr. Aguirre?
I don't have the paper in front of me, but is this paid for our grant or is this straight budget?
This is straight budget.
And we've been paying this for a number of years. I think it's...
It is.
It's good increase in AP participation, so I'm not opposed to it, but there's no grants for this that can pay for this.
No.
Thank you. I yield.
Deb, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll on college board.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, 6-1, is a discussion on referral business and how it would look financially for the district.
Motion to postpone until the HR director's present.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second on postponement. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes, 6-2.
Just on that same issue, we had everything carried forward from the last meeting, which Mr. Lawley had a presentation, which we, he was here to do it then, we went in the back to try to rush through things before the 10:30 deadline, so he didn't get to present, so I don't know why that's not on here, but I would, if it was, I would make the motion to postpone that as well, but I would assume, do we need a motion to make sure that on the next meeting, he's going to present those two?
That's the plan, the next scheduled meeting, that will show up on the agenda.
Thank you. I yield.
6-2 is a discussion, the policy BEDH, whether the committee should allow to have more conversations with individuals during citizens' input as referred by the parent and community outreach subcommittee and presented by Colin Dias, school committee man. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. In preparing for this meeting, I was actually kind of glad this was postponed to this meeting because I believe a great example for this discussion matter here is what took place last week. We had an individual, a parent from the community, who was, in my opinion, mistreated by this committee. When we make decisions on contracts, on policy, we should make decisions with an informed opinion from all stakeholders. That includes if the nursing department has an opinion on a matter, they should be here to present if they wish to. That includes educators, that includes any employee of the district, and that also includes parents that had firsthand experiences. And we should use that knowledge, taking everything in, to make a decision when it comes to items. If you watch a city council meeting, they run their meetings just fine while engaging in conversations with the public when needed. I'm sure you'll hear counterarguments as we have in the past about the need to maintain decorum, however, it's the same individuals who don't maintain decorum themselves. We have protocols in place, and if you're adamant, that adamant against allowing citizens to speak at our meetings or to write letters, and if you're that pressed about hearing from individuals in your constituency, I believe you're in the wrong profession. I believe we need to, at the very least, we took a vote, I believe it was four to three, to remove the language that allows for the lack of discussion. If an individual comes before us and I have a question, if it pertains to the item, I should be allowed to ask. I shouldn't be censored whatsoever, and if a member of the public comes before us and they have a question for their elected body, I'm going to respond if I have something to give them, and that should be honored. It's the same way the city council does it. We need to really loosen up on the way we treat the citizens of the city. I yield.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey.
I feel like I've just been chastised because in no way, not only at the subcommittee meeting, but also with the regular school committee meeting we had a couple of weeks back, I thought that, I thought that we handled the speaker very, very respectfully, especially at the subcommittee meeting. It was very comfortable. Everybody listened two ways. We really researched the topic that we needed to research, and we realized that the policy we have in the books right now has been working for a good number of years, and we just chose to continue with the policy in that way and not in any disregard to the parents' concerns or comments because she was extremely respectful and extremely researched, and she presented herself intellectually. It's just that we adhered to our policy, in no way did I feel that she was disrespected. Thank you. I yield.
You want to go, Ms. Larve, or you want Mr. Aguirre? Mr. Aguirre, go ahead.
Yeah, just, as I'm looking at the policy that we have here, I think we need to also look at the special meeting definition and the regular meeting definition. For instance, this particular meeting, I don't consider this to be a special meeting. I consider this to be an additional regular meeting because we have 15 things on, you know, more than that, 25, 30 things on the agenda. The point of a special meeting is a special meeting for one specific purpose only. When we carry things forward because of decisions that are made by the committee to limit this time of meetings or whatever else, we actually have, this is actually a regular meeting and not special. So I don't think we should be telling people, "This is a special meeting, you can't talk about this," or "You can only talk about items on the agenda for a special," but I or you can only talk about items on the agenda for a special, but I do think that we need to clarify what that is.
This is on citizens' input, Mr. Agia.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, but you're talking about.
The special meeting is in here. So on the fourth paragraph, it talks about citizen input time, public comment at any special meeting, which is why I'm referring to it now, because it's part of the backup documents for this item.
I, I think, I think you're right about the breadth of this meeting compared to a special meeting. I do. I think it's a little, it is like a regular meeting. I, I kind of felt that way when I saw the agenda.
So I guess my, my point is just that, I'm not sure what this, I think it's just a discussion, but.
Yeah, it is.
If we can all agree to say, a special meeting is a limited scope, I, I think citizen input time should be at all of them, personally. But if that's not the case, something like this should be a regular additional meeting, not called a special. So we had a special meeting to talk about a transportation contract, let's say. That would be a special meeting that we have for that one purpose only. I think that's the point of this. But in our current policy, it says, public comment at any special meeting shall be limited to items on the agenda. That's where I think we need to either agree that we're not going to put a whole bunch of things on a agenda and call it a special meeting, because it's a new additional meeting. I think that's a clarity that's needed. Otherwise, we should change the policy, in my opinion. I yield.
Okay. I, I do think we value citizens' input a lot, because if you look at what we did with the teachers, we have 20, 25, I'm sorry, we have 20, 25 teachers down here tonight, all of them getting the respect they deserve, three minutes, not restricted on their comments, but I think that that's how we've dealt with it. We've had a lot more citizens' input at our meetings than I see at most of the council meetings, and especially during the contract time, so it seems like it's working fine. We're giving everybody the opportunity. I believe the only confusion that parent had that night was when she was going to talk. Other than that, I thought she was fine. I just think she, I, I think she was given, allegedly given instructions that she talk at the beginning and sign up on the paper, and that didn't work, and it just went a little sideways, but we gave her the opportunity during the regular meeting. I'm not against that, especially the way we've handled a large, large volume of citizens' input. Mr. Dias.
Just, just to my colleague's point, if I, I don't think we need to make a formal motion, even change the policy, but if I can just ask, if it's, just ask you, if it's an item, if there's an agenda of a special meeting, if it's some sort of carryover because we're ending early, and there's, which is say more than five items, we'll just call it a regular meeting, and if a citizen has something, an input they wish to give, they should be able to give it. And just, I don't, I don't think that's outrageous.
No, I, I don't, like I said, I don't, I kind of almost agree with what Mr. Agia was saying. It's a regular meeting, so let's just treat them that way. I'm with you.
And, and just, and I don't need an answer now, just clarification. If a citizen does submit an input at a special meeting, and I, I don't know if, if it's you personally who reviews the citizen's input, or if that's delegated, I don't think it should be delegated. I believe it should be a ruling on the chair, and the committee has the ability to appeal. I'm not sure what it is, if we can just get an answer at, at a future date on what the answer is to that, and who makes the decisions on whether input is valid under the policy or not, or under the charter or not. I appreciate that. Thank you. I yield.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Corey?
Mr. Chair, just in regard to my colleague's question just now, in the Mass General Laws, there is no legal requirement for public comment, according to the Mass General Laws. It's always up to the chair of the committee, which is you, Mr. Mayor. And so I, I thought that you handle overall, you handle the public comment section very well, especially in the heated atmosphere that we had with the contract negotiations. I thought that we gave everybody their fair due, and that, everything needs to run through you, because you're the chairman, but there is no legal requirement for it. So I, I think that it's a, it's a luxury for the public, but it's also an opportunity for the public to state their concerns, but it must be in a concise manner. That's my feeling on that.
Okay.
I yield.
Thank you. Six two, I'm sorry, six three?
Mr. Chairman?
Is, Mr. Agia?
On the document that we're looking at, the public comment, it's actually in the charter.
Oh, okay.
So it is in the charter that we have citizen input time. So it's not an option. We do have it. I think we can make some clarifications on what it is and what it's not, but whether it's the law or not, it's in the charter. It's listed right there, section 9.18 of the charter. So I think that we need to follow it, but I do appreciate your willingness to call in regular meetings. Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Six three is a discussion and vote to approve the updated M O U for Tiverton, as presented by Kevin Almeida, chief financial officer.
Make a motion to approve. I have a question, though.
I got a motion.
Second.
Second, a motion and a second. Mr. Almeida, then Mr. Dias.
Sure. So I, I'm looking to go back to Tiverton. They had actually come to us asking to increase the amount that we're paying specifically to students of special needs and, and students who, to potentially go into vocational program. And so they were looking essentially to double the rate, and so what I'm asking for you is if I can go to them with an up to $4,000 for those students in the agreement, so.
Okay, Mr. Dias, have a question.
Yeah, that was pretty much on the, so the four, I was looking for an update. So this is between the meetings, when this was first up, I know you were going to go to them and then come back. So they want more, they want more money?
No, 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 I, I was just looking, I, I was looking for a vote from you to make sure that it was okay to negotiate that in order to get that in the agreement moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't see an issue. I guess I'll just rehash a little bit what I said at the last meeting. I just hope Tiverton isn't going to be too greedy, especially when they're relying on many different services of the city. And I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Agia.
So I was, I read the document. It doesn't have the grades of the children, but I recall two, three years ago, having some sort of agreement, but once the students get, made it to fifth grade or sixth grade, they would no longer be eligible for this practice. I don't know the ages here, but I'm tempted to, based on our cert discussion, we're told that the buses are going to cost, the transportation is going to cost big money to transport those children. We were told it was going to sort of work it out. Now, we're saying that if we, even though we're required to give transportation, we can put the kids on cert bus and call it a day, then I would, I'm curious of the ages, because I, and if you look at the old, I don't know if it's in here, but the one that Dr. Malone signed back in the day, I want to say that it was said at that time that we, and I haven't read it in here, but we knew it was a limited, you know, two, three-year program, and then that was it. We also have other areas in the city, like on, they almost live in Westport, on Blossom Road and stuff. They have a Westport mailing address, but they live in Fall River. Are we going to do that with other communities like we're doing with Tiverton? Would be my question, I guess, and you probably don't know that answer off the top of your head on, because it's a one-year agreement, but we're going to be doing this year over year. Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand.
So it's like a one-year vote, but we're setting up something that is this now going to be for six years? And then, I know you said that we got the money from, we, we put in for reimbursement.
Correct.
Did we not do that for the last five years?
Previously, we hadn't, no.
That's where I would wonder, how did that happen? Because if we put the kid's address in our computer, the E S C is going to tell us that they live in Fall River, not in Tiverton. I know it's a Rhode Island thing, but. We, so we left $100,000 on the table for five years, half a million dollars?
Yep.
Based on, I don't know, I'm not trying to blame somebody, but $500,000 is a lot of money to lose.
I will tell you that the students were all notified this past year to come in and enroll with us, or else they weren't going to be able to go to Tiverton, is what was, is what happened. And so they enrolled with us here, so that we could get credit for the students attending.
So if we had this agreement, let's just say, think this through, if we had a, if we had the same agreement in Fall River on Blossom Road, and we had five kids that are going to need to get transported by law to schools in Fall River, and they said, well, instead of that, we'll register them, and then we'll make an agreement with Westport or another community to fund them. Is that an option for other families?
So I, so it's different, because it's, that would, because, because it's Massachusetts, it would be school choice. We're able to collect money on the students from Rhode Island, because it's out of state.
But the kids are in Massachusetts. They live in Massachusetts.
Correct, but because they're tuitioning out to, to Tiverton, we're able to, to get that money, that reimbursement.
And you, and we get a full reimbursement?
We do.
Whereas if you take a kid from Blossom Road that's on the Westport side to come here, we get five grand?
Yes.
I would just ask you to look at that, because I think it potentially is, I guess unfair. If you live in Tiverton, it's one, you get one thing. If you live in the border of wherever, it could be another far out place. But I just think, we got to figure out whether this is ending, or is it just going to go on forever? And what if more students chose to do it? Do we do the same thing for those kids? Or is it just these, I think this is for five? You know, if it's five kids, what if it turned into 10 kids? Is that still going to happen? Just throwing it out there, I think those questions are, need to be answered. I wouldn't say necessarily for this, but I think going forward, they need to be answered. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey?
So I, it's a good point to raise, because, I mean, I, I really enjoy it when we can help our neighboring communities. It's very important to help, help all, we should all be in the game together. But I don't want to be taken advantage of, and I'm just wondering, Madam Superintendent, if we might want to refer this to the policy committee to look a little bit more further into? Is that, is that a necessary move?
Mr. Corey, this is an M O U.
An M O U, yeah, memorandum of, of understanding.
Well, we get reimbursed at the state rate for those students, and they're charging us $4,000 or $5,000.
Yeah.
So we're making money.
We're making money.
We're making money.
Okay, good. I yield.
Okay, can we vote on that, please?
Can I ask, just a comment, one more comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I believe the question I was asking before was about whether students in middle school and high school are entitled to transportation, and I believe on the D E S C guidelines, it's only K to six.
Yes.
So that's the question that, where I was saying with this. So if these students live, it's obviously more than two miles away from this school, and they needed to come to this high school, what are our obligations under the law, if any, to transport those kids? That's what I was trying to make the point before. If we have an obligation to transport them, then we have a decision to make on how it goes. If we didn't, the parents can say, well, we're going to get them to the closest cert bus stop, and then they're going to go on their own. I think the seven to 12 cert of transportation is optional, not mandated, as what we were just talking about. So in this case, that, you can find out if they're in middle school or high school. So if a student was in seventh grade, if we had to pay them transportation, if we didn't, why would we even, other than we can make money on it, I guess, the way this is, you get what I'm saying? I think it's something to.
I think that a couple of years ago, it was a very relevant discussion, because it was just plain costing us money. We were, we, we were paying, and we weren't necessarily getting anything in return, because the students weren't registered here in, in Fall River. Now that they are, even if we don't have to transport them, it's not costing us anything to have, to tuition them out to Tiverton. So it's, but, and, and, you're right, maybe we, we're not required to transport them. So there's not this, there's not the argument of, hey, if we actually had to bus these kids in, we'd be running this separate bus, it's going to cost X, it's going to save us money if we just pay Tiverton. Now, even if we don't have to transport them, and it wasn't going to cost us any, it's not costing us anything extra to provide them with an opportunity to go to school with their neighbors, kind of thing.
And it could be that we're, we're actually getting more resources.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So if it's just five kids by this special act, M O U, what if there was 10 children under that same, or kids that are coming up through the system? Are they all going to have that same option in that area? So if you live on that border of Tiverton, are you eligible to go to Tiverton? And now we, now, if we made $100,000 and we add 25 more kids, we add $200,000.
Right.
I, I just think it's something to look at, but put in, either an end to it, or this is how it's going to go forever.
Okay.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Can we vote on this, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Six four, discussion and vote to approve the meeting livestream options, as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, chief information officer.
Good evening, everyone. When we met as a tech subcommittee, we went over some options to livestream subcommittees, and it was recommended by the committee to livestream the subcommittee meetings at 417 Rock Street, starting in September of the new school year, to give us some time to replace a couple of wires that were in that room during COVID. So it's already pre-wired, so we have to make some adjustments. And then we also talked about where it would be easier to have the full committee meetings. This is ideal, because it's wired for this. And then the chair of the subcommittee, Mr. Agia, asked me to investigate the costs to have a secondary location, which would be the CUS community room, if we wanted to have a full meeting there, and I am in the process of doing that now. And we'll report back to another tech subcommittee meeting in the coming, in the coming months, probably August. So we have a plan, but the plan would be to livestream all subcommittee meetings from 417 Rock Street moving forward, starting this September. And the full meetings would be here as a backup location, to be determined on costs of wiring and the engineering piece for the CUS community room.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Corey?
A vote to approve, but I just have a question. How much additional cost is this going to be to set up live streaming?
So currently, ideally, we probably will be able to do it with what we have in-house at 417 Rock Street. It will cost, you know, an extra body, because there'll be someone in the basement controlling the camera, the camera equipment, and then someone there for the livestream. So we'll be an additional person for each subcommittee meeting. And I can get the, you know, the actual personnel amount through the superintendent in a Friday email.
That would help. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Cabral, I'll go ahead, Ms. Larrabee.
Yep. So I'm not comfortable yet. I would like all the numbers together, the staffing, right?
Okay.
So on here is just the, the options of, the first level, I believe, is about 65 or 6,000, right?
That, and that, those, that was just, again, those were rough estimates while we were talking it through. When Renee Kochman and I and Alex, we have the equipment in-house, that was more if we needed the equipment. We're pretty confident that we can do it with what we have in-house. But I can put together just a set of numbers in the Friday email for, you know, 417 Rock Street.
Right. I think I'd like to bring this back. I mean, I know we have a motion on the, on the floor, but get everything. I don't think we have everything yet to, to move forward, you know, especially staffing. I mean, are we going to go with, with package, are we going to go with, is it going to be one staff members, are going to be two staff members?
Well, if, if we do the 417 Rock Street, it's just going to be two staff members a meeting. That would be the only location that we would wire for subcommittee meetings.
Okay, and that's, we have one now, is what I'm saying, right?
Correct.
So we're adding another staff.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just get it, I mean, I don't know where we go from here, because there's a motion.
We have a motion.
I'm not supporting it this week.
Chairman?
Hold on, hold on. You, you done?
Yeah, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so we had a robust discussion at the technology subcommittee meeting on this issue. I thought it was a good discussion with the superintendent, Mr. Cabral, Mr. Kochman was actually behind the camera at the time. So I think we received all of the backup that we needed to get it. This is relatively short money. And it was also going to duplicate what the city council gets. So the public gets access to city council meetings live. We should get the same thing. We're no different than the, the city council. So the school, city council gets it, we should get the same. In addition to that, we wanted to make sure we take a vote, because before they get this going, we can't have school committee members saying later on, oh, I want to have meetings all over the city, because of that. So we need to be on record saying, let's go forward with it. All subcommittee meetings will be there. And except for, if there was a subcommittee where we know there was going to be a large crowd, then we would do that, and it would not be taped live, because we didn't want to spend that extra money for a one-off meeting. But we had a robust discussion at the subcommittee meeting, so I'm totally fine with it. And then moving forward, we talked about having one place to have our subcommittee, our school committee meetings, so that we don't have to keep on taking them serial up and down. It takes a long time for us to do this, and the equipment's getting ruined. There's no reason for it. We should have one location ultimately, moving forward. It could be six, eight months, nine months down the road. But I do think that the CUS media center was talked about, as we've had subcommittee meetings there. It's large enough to, you know, hold more people. Definitely, however many people are here could fit in it. So I think that was part two, but we need to take a vote to authorize them to move forward, get this ready for September. I yield.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Corey?
Yes, I just want to clarify, Mr. Cabral. I, I remember bringing this issue up when, when this school was still under construction. I remember it being a concern of the department, the technology department, to have a steady setup. I'm totally in favor of a steady setup. Is that what we're talking about here? That our, our regular school committee meetings will generally be held here, and our subcommittee meetings would be at 417 Rock Street?
Correct, and then just to have that option, we were pricing out the CUS community room as a 911 kind of area, if we needed a bigger space.
And so you, you would already have a setup there that you wouldn't, guys wouldn't have to transport there? Because I know it's, it's really hard on, on you guys doing that.
Correct. We'd have, we're looking at the same system with the robotic cameras that are hanging on the walls. There's one here on a tripod, just because of the stage, but that's what we would be looking at to outfit the CUS community room. And it's already outfitted at 417 Rock. During COVID, we used that for emergency messages through our superintendent at the time, so that's already pre-wired. We just have to light it up with some equipment in the basement.
This is a good idea. It's been a long time coming. I, I will vote to approve. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, Mr. Dias, then Ms. Larrabee.
I yield.
You yield?
So.
Me?
Yeah, Ms. Larrabee.
So the estimated cost for the, for the tier one, right, the 6,200, so what you're saying, we have to pay $100 a month for internet. We're not paying $100 a month?
No, so I, I was asked by the chair of the tech subcommittee just to put something together, so they could see costs, and that's roughly what it is. However, you're not paying any extra for the internet, because we already pay for it every month. But it was just to show the costs associated with every meeting, what it looked like as a breakdown. But it was just to show the costs associated with every meeting, what it looked like as a breakdown for every meeting.
Minus the staffing on you.
Correct.
Correct, so it's the 6,200 one-time payment for the tier one, correct?
Well, no, because as I just said, that was just a, a work, kind of a worksheet. We can do this in-house without any cost other than the personnel to run the meetings.
Okay, I yield.
Yeah, that was my concern. So none of these numbers?
No, they were just, it was a workbook, it was kind of, it was like Mr. Aguirre said, it was a decent meeting because we were bouncing ideas back and forth.
We're not buying a truck for you for 100 grand and 300 a month, okay?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, what does that mean there, Dr. Curly?
Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay, just kidding, okay. All right, so let's vote on this one then. Go ahead, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve the school committee changed their dates for July 21 and August 11th is presented by Dr. Curly.
So we are just requesting initially a move of the July date to the 21st of July, rather than the week prior, just to give ourselves a little bit more time to close out the fiscal year. We close out fiscal year and then, you know, prep for that meeting. And then a secondary request then to move the, so moving to the July 21st to July 28th, and then a secondary that would move the August 11th meeting to August 18th.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias?
Yes, so, and I'm looking at the backup for is, I believe is, we're doing this in part to prepare for the end of the year report?
Yes.
When does that report due? Due, yes, when, when is the report due by? Because we're going to change the, the meeting, but isn't that due at the 31st?
The report's due by October 1st, September 30th, depending on where it falls on the calendar. Usually like a Friday is usually when it's due.
And the school committee votes to approve that end of the year report?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess the last comment I'm, I'm going to say, and I'll be sincere about this, is we've ran into issues over the last, I'd say, few months of meetings getting scheduled, meetings getting canceled last minute, four members of the committee not being able to make a meeting last minute, and the meeting getting canceled. And that leaves the issues for you. I'm sure you would love to get that. I, I think, I think this is appropriate conversation.
Okay.
Ran, you, I'm sure you would love to see that Tiverton MOU approved earlier so you can go to Tiverton earlier. Again, I'm just going to say, if we're going to change the dates, make sure, I've asked my colleagues to make sure they're able to attend it. I yield.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey?
And so Madam Superintendent, I, it looks like I'm going to have an issue with the 28th only because of some strong personal family plans around that week. I will make, I will make a strong attempt, but I was, it's just that, I'm just informing you in open meeting that it could be potentially a difficult day for me. Thank you, I yield.
Okay, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I definitely won't be around for that day, and I don't believe that we should be changing meetings three weeks before they happen. So I'd like to make a motion that we keep the meeting on July 14th.
Second.
21st, it's scheduled for the 21st.
21st.
It's already scheduled.
It's already scheduled for July 21st.
Then I want to make it to the 14th. I'm not going to be here for that time, for the, for that week.
Which, whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait.
They're looking to move it up a week.
You, you want to move it earlier? But you want to move it, but you don't want to move to the other one? So the motion is to move it.
I'm just saying, I'm not here from that week, from the 21st. I have a wedding out of the country. And I'm not going to be here for that meeting.
Will you be back by the 28th?
No, we're coming back on the 28th. So I just have a problem when we meet, like, when we do this last minute and we just don't get anything, we don't know. We, we've known this probably for how, how many months that it, it needed to, and I actually, I had the 14th for our meeting in the summer. So that's why I was thinking that the 21st was, you know, the second Monday. So that's why I'm, I'm looking at it as I didn't know it was the 21st, I thought it was the 14th. That's why I was saying I wanted to keep it as the 14th because I thought this was, same to change it to the-
What day of the week is the 28th?
It's a Monday.
Want to go, oh, we can't go the same day as the school, as the city council?
Well, I don't know if they're meeting, I don't know who they're-
I just go the next day then, Kevin, when you get back, the 29th.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor? It's a, it's a, I know we just had the conversation about special meetings, but I think if it's a special meeting, it can go the same day.
Well, then it's going to be one topic, but I think we're going to have more than one topic that day.
It's not a special meeting.
It's not a special meeting, it's a regular meeting. It's a regular schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a vote, I mean, we got a vote on it, we got a vote on it. Can you go to 29th, Kev?
It's not 20th, it's the 28th.
Okay, the 28th, but he's not-
28th is a Monday, I don't believe I'm back at that time.
Okay. Well, we have a-
Can we postpone this and try to find out?
Motion table.
To the end of the agenda?
Oh, you mean by the end of the agenda? Yeah, we'll just postpone it. And we'll pick, brick this one back up. All right, get a motion to postpone the item?
Motion postpone to the end of the, uh, end of the agenda.
End of the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Deb, call the roll on postponing to the end of the agenda, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Six-six is an update on the Opera allocated funds for the Pace Center. It's referred by the Special Ed, Alternative Ed Subcommittee, presented by me. What we're doing at Pace right now is, I believe that the bids have been finalized for the sprinkler system. We were talking with Glenn Hathaway and Al Olivera today about it. I think they're going to be pulling their permit. And we expect work on the fire suppression system in the Pace Center to commence within the next two weeks. We have the money set aside for that, and we're ready to go. That'll open up the building. It's another infrastructure project, like the roof that we want to get done before we go forward. So that'll be the next piece to working on the Pace Center and the old auditorium. And that's the update, unless someone has a question, Mr. Dias?
Yes, I, the, the reason I made a motion to refer this out of a subcommittee is going to the city council, your opera director, Kara Hum, made some comments relative to possible extra work that could be done on the building to open up some classroom sizes, so more than just the roof. So I guess that's what I was looking for as one member, more of an update.
Right.
I, if I could ask, if I could ask as one member if we could receive the copies of the biz, of the contracts, and see how much money is being left over from that? I don't know if the city has plans on taking the money back. I did, I did put in a records request with your interim CFO. And the city, I guess, needs 30 business days to respond to it. So I guess I'm just looking for just some, just a little bit more information.
Mr. Dias, that is a city building, it's not a school building. The city owns the building, and the city's doing the work.
That, that won't, that won't be passed on to the school department?
If we decide to go that route, we will, but it's a city building and it's a city project. That's why Mr. Olivera is running it instead of Mr. Pacheco.
Right, but we're still being, still, we still have the, the Pace Center being housed.
Yeah, we're putting in, and we're putting in a sprinkler system for the school department.
Right, I, I guess I, I'm just wondering as one member, I guess my main question is, is all the money that was allocated going to go for that project? Is it just going to be, or are we just going to work on just a sprinkler system and a roof?
Well, the next, the, the first step was the roof, the next step is the sprinkler system, and we'll go forward after that to see what we do with that area. I mean, I just heard someone was saying we're looking for a permanent home for the, for the livestreaming. I don't know what, I don't know what's going to happen. We do have ideas, but they're not finalized, and I'm not going to get into that preliminary stuff. We're doing it one step at a time. All important infrastructure work for the safety of anyone in the building, and we're going to get it done.
I, I guess I'll just respectfully disagree that. I think the committee should weigh in on what you, what you mentioned preliminary. I think we should know if we're going to be working on the interior and the classrooms. Leave it at that for now, I yield.
Okay. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just a few things. One is, I think it's good that the city paid for the roof and the suppression. Otherwise, we can't, we can't do anything in there repairing it at this present time based on that. I think we're way woefully behind on the schedule. We were supposed to have that done a year ago so that we could be moving in the Pace Center. But I do think with that being said, and the Connolly lease that we're approving again, we need to revisit what we're going to do as a district on the, at the Pace Center. So I'd like to make a recommendation that the next facility subcommittee meeting, we get a full update on the Pace Center, including all plans, so that we can be on the same page. We know it's not opening in September of 2025, but we don't want to do work and then switch it halfway through. Once the suppression gets in, I believe that's going to take them a little bit of time. So in the next month or so, I think we have a chance to have a meeting, have some real plans, and determine the best place, the best use of that property. So I don't think that needs a motion, but I would request that from the superintendent that we put that on. Thank you, I yield.
Item number six-seven is a discussion and vote to approve a one-year contract renewal for Whitson's New England, as presented by Ken Pacheco Food Service.
So moved?
A second.
I have a motion to say, any discussion on adding a year to Whitson's? Mr. Dias?
Just one, I, I did go through the contract, I did have like two questions, but I know you just had a quick presentation or-
Sure, so it's, it's a, an amendment to the contract. It's a five-year contract that we have at Whitson's. We're in year three, this is the start of year three on the agreement that you have. The first year is, is with contract, the second year, we go through the process with DESI. We submit the numbers with, using the CPI as the guide for the increase in, in the contract. DESI looks at the document, sends it back to us as a draft, which is what you have. And that also will be each and every year until the five-year contract is up. So every year, we will have a renewal like this. This is renewal number two of-
Sure.
Year three, this is year three.
So this basically covers all the food, cafeteria food?
It's everything that they do, including, including the a la carte menus, if we do any catering services, everything that, that Whitson does that is covered under this contract.
Right, I haven't received any complaints recently. I don't know if, I mean, I'll vote, I guess I'll vote to approve it, but if the committee can just get some, any, we've received any feedback, or we've done any surveys on quality of the food? I don't know if like any sandwiches have wilted lettuce, I don't know if, if they were running into issues with, I know a few years ago, I wasn't even a member of the committee, but I was receiving complaints on some of the quality of the food. Back then, I don't know if we're still having issues. Just something that we should keep in mind, and obviously, administration is supporting this, so I'm assuming if there was any issues, I'll just assume either they've been taken care of or, or not. So, and I guess my last question is, since we explained the state process, so I was going to ask, again, we, we don't have to submit like an RFP even if it's an extension.
We, we did that originally. So when the, when this five-year contract is up, we will have to go out with the, with a RFP process again. And that is through DESI, so DESI has the guide as to how that process happens. That document, they've just revamped, so the last contract was the first time we've ever had it. And it's a standardized RFP process that we follow.
Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corey?
I'll try to be brief, Mr. Pacheco. In regard to Whitson's, in my experience at the elementary school, I saw so many young students issuing or not taking the fruit that was offered with the lunches. Is there any way that we can make that portion of their meal optional? And maybe, you know, it's, it's not even about cost. I'm thinking out of the box now, and just thinking about giving it to the veterans or the homeless centers or something like that.
So that's not, that's not doable. So the, the students take what they take. We try not to, I think the schools are very good at monitoring to make sure food's not getting thrown away.
Yeah.
A student would, you know, would put an apple in their bag, backpack that they could take home. We, we don't like food on the buses for a variety of reasons, especially those that can be thrown. But we don't discourage, you know, them taking that stuff home. But it is part of the meal, and, and the meal is what we're reimbursed for from the state. So it is part of that meal. And, and the variety of an apple, an orange, fruit slices, carrots, things like that are all kind of mixed up a bit, so it's not the same thing every day.
And then there are liability issues involved once the child has it in their plate and stuff. Thanks, I yield.
Anything further on Whitson's, Mr. Aguirre?
The money that is, that the administrative fee?
Yes.
And then the management fee?
Yes.
Are those in the original contract subject to CPI directly? It's not optional?
No, that's, that is, that is part of the contract, those two pieces.
So it says administrative fee is $23,000 per doll, per month for 10 months?
Yes.
And then it says management fee, $14,800 per month for 10 months, and this fee represents the FSMC profit?
Yes.
So why would they be two, I don't, can you explain why, what the two of those are? And there's the, does the CPI somewhere in a different document talk to it?
So the CPI is added on to both of those items individually, and then come up with each year. So the, the CPI is not known until that CPI number comes out. And that's added on at the end of each of the original contract numbers.
But they're both going to Whitson's, I guess that's my question. Why would they be different? If we just added these two numbers together?
It's the way the bid is put together. So this is not something that just Whitson's does. Every person who's bidding on the project bids it that way.
So they have to tell you what your profit is, so they don't make any profit on the administrative fee at $23,000 a month?
It's a salary, it's a salary piece. It's salaried, so to speak. So it's, it's their whole operation that we're paying for out of administrative fee and, and the work that they do, obviously doing all the reimbursements. They get the whole thing, Whitson's gets the whole piece.
Yes, do you understand how confusing that is?
I do.
Because if it looks like this is saying the fee represents the profit, I wonder who's getting that profit?
Whitson's. The whole, the whole package is going to Whitson's, both of those dollar items are going to Whitson's.
I guess I don't know why they'd have to, we don't ask, I don't think, for any other person to tell us what, yeah. If Michael Joyce charges us money-
This is done through DESI. This is a DESI thing, it's not, also, as I said, the RFP process is very regimented. It is, it is laid out completely as to how they bid, what they bid on. And that's what we follow. So when the other companies bid, all of them look exactly the same.
So if I wanted to make a motion that we just do the, the management fee slash profit be similar to last year?
We have to pay the CPI. It's in the contract. So the item from last year, the, and the fee from last year, the CPI is added on to that, which is this year's number.
So we don't have an option, is my point?
You don't.
Correct. So I, that's where I think, moving forward to the next one years, if we're asking us to approve one years, that means next year we can deny it. I guess that's our only option. If we said we don't want to pay you more of a profit-
Then you're breaking a five-year contract. You are breaking a contract.
So then why do we have to do it five years?
To make the CPI adjustment.
So we're not voting on the con, we're not voting on-
You're voting on the amendment, that is the amendment. The contract was voted on once, the original contract. Each year, we submit the numbers for this year, for the upcoming year. It turns into that amendment. We send it to DESI, DESI looks at the numbers, approves it, or denies it, approves it, sends it to us. We send, we bring it here so you can approve it at that level as a draft. And then when you're, if it gets approved here, it will go to DESI, and that document will be the new document. And then next year, the exact same thing is going to happen, and then the fifth year, it'll happen again.
I would say that we have to look under the management fee, second paragraph. This agreement shall be in effect for one year, starting 7/1/2025, and may be renewed by mutual agreement for two more one-year periods. So mutual agreement means that the school committee says, no, we don't want it.
Then we would go out, then, then if we, if that is the case, then we would go out again for a contract, again for a contract, go through the RFP process for the following year.
Yeah. I just think it's an option. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion.
One, one quick follow-up.
Go ahead, Mr. Dias.
And that, and thank you for the explanation. So, it is, so for the amendment to this contract, I know we've, the school committee voted on the original contract, and I went through it and didn't really seem, I didn't see anything about the catering, so this doesn't cover catering? That's in the original contract?
Covers Witsen's. In the original contract, there's a catering menu. So, the price adjustments on the catering menu, if required, we can do, but the catering menu and, and the process for the catering is all laid out in the original RFP.
Okay. I guess I'll just ask, I'll vote to support it. I'd just like to maybe get an update in the future on what we use for catering. I also would just like to say, as one member, I think we should get rid of the school committee catering from this company. I yield.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Mr. Hagia.
Can we just have superintendent ask for some feedback from the utility workers and custodians related to how much food, to my colleague's point about how much food's getting thrown out? If we could get some sort of questionnaire out to them? I'm just curious. Thank you. I yield.
All right. Deb, do I have a motion, a second?
You do, Mayor.
Okay. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Six, eight. It's a discussion and vote to approve the amendment number two to the Connolly lease.
Motion to approve with a question?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Bishop Connolly, presented by Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. This is similar to amendment we approved.
Last year, yes. Well, not that long ago.
And this one, this one, I, this amendment two, I didn't get to go through, so this, does this also cover water and sewer? Do, do we still have to pay the, the water and sewer?
So, we, this, we only pay the lease. Okay? We, all of the amenities on this, on this rental are included. The only thing that we pay additionally at Bishop Connolly, we don't pay, we actually provide service, is the snow removal, and then obviously custodian for our portion of the building.
Right. But don't we reimburse the redevelopment authority for water and sewer? I thought we did.
This building is owned by the diocese.
Catholic Church owns this.
Yeah, this is owned by the diocese, so there is no redevelopment authority. That's 2501.
Oh, all right. No, I apologize.
It's not, yeah. It's a different property, yes.
I yield.
Mr. Hagia.
Just a question on the custodian you mentioned. So, I think we did a, a contract with, this custodian here is going to be a senior. Is there one less senior now that we added more? If we close.
Eastern.
So, when 300, when 300 closes, that will be a senior. The term escapes, escapes me right now, the fact that the senior job is, it's, it's senior displaced, is what that title.
So, we're going from two sites, two seniors.
Yes.
To now one site, person will get a job somewhere, but not necessarily.
Exactly.
So, it's actually a savings of custodial by combining, and the lease. I'm trying to figure out how much money we're saving by closing 300. We've got to add the staff.
So, the lease, right. The lease of the building, the staff is moving over.
Yes.
There are more classrooms here, so the, the purpose of this is, is, the amendment is to increase the size of the operation.
Get more. And how many rooms is it going to be now?
It'll be eighteen classrooms.
Eighteen total. And they're full-size classrooms, not like the.
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hagia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. For your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments, and regretfully, some of our former staff.
Mr. Chairman.
Passed away. Mr. Hagia.
Before, can we go back to the meeting date? So, the 28th, I am not here until late in the evening, but I am here on the 29th. I don't know if my colleague had a problem with just the 28th, or was it?
We could do the 29th. City Council does not.
29th is good. So, we'll change that date. So, let's go back.
I'm asking my colleague. He, he mentioned he has an issue. I don't know if it was a week-long issue, or was it a one-day issue?
It's, it's a week-long. My out-of-town family is in, they're all in, everybody's going to be in, and people be, I was just hoping.
Well, you wouldn't have made it to 28th either then, right?
It's, it's that whole week that my out-of-town family is going to be around. I was hoping that, I didn't know that we were going to change the date of the 21st. 21st was fine by me.
It didn't, it doesn't work for you either, right, Kevin?
21st, no.
No.
Tommy, can you give us an hour or so? Cut an hour out or something like that, like you did before?
I mean, I'm not going to, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'll fulfill my obligation, you know?
So, let's go back.
I know, I know it'll just get in the way of my family, that's all.
Yeah. All right. So, what number was that on the agenda, Kevin? You got it out in front of you?
Number five.
Item number five? All right. So, we're going to go with July.
29th.
July 29th and August.
18th.
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 Deb, can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a motion, a second. Deb, can you call the roll?
Can I just, just a follow-up?
Mr. Hagia.
What was the issue on the Monday? We can't do Monday?
The 28th?
No, the 14th. They wanted it to move back.
I'm out of town.
The first week.
I'm out of town the 14th.
So, the best thing is the 29th?
29th.
Okay. I can make it. Thank you.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
All right.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. So, I don't know where the heck.
FYI, change.
FYII?
Yep.
Does anybody have any comment? Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to place on file, accept and place on file.
A second.
I have a second. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Hagia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is number, item number eight, new business. Any business to come before the school committee, Mr. Dias?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to try and go, I have four. I'm going to try and go through them quick just for the sake of time. First item, and I previously asked for this to be on the agenda, there was a letter that the city council signed off on, and we all rescinded our vote. However, the letter that we thought we were rescinding our vote on had absolutely nothing to do with combining transportation into net school spending. It talked about getting more state assistance for transportation costs, which is something we've all been battling for, and we voted to endorse some, some bills, want some brought forward by the FREA. When I reviewed the letter, I didn't see anything controversial in there, so I think we should take a second look at it and support, in support with our city council colleagues. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you might have signed off on it as well, Mr. Mayor? And I think, I would just like this request that the item just be placed on the next agenda for, for review, because I didn't see anything controversial in the letter, and I wish the city council told us that they were going to remove the language, which had to do with combining transportation and net school spending, which I thought was the issue. So, that's item one. Item two, I also asked for this item to go on the agenda. At the DIRFIE graduation, there was an individual that attempted to come on the property with a firearm. I did receive an update from the superintendent. I had one follow-up question.
Hold on. If we could, if I could just address, this is scheduled as a, a special meeting, and anything on the new business should relate to the.
It is for now, Mr. Dias. This one is scheduled as special.
I thought we went over that already.
I know. I agree, but this one was scheduled as special.
So, it doesn't apply.
Yeah. I don't have a problem going forward. Like I said, to me, it's a regular meeting, but it's, it says special on the agenda. That's what we accepted. I don't, I don't, like I said, this is too many items for a special, in my humble opinion. Going forward, we should do it the, as a regular meeting. I'm not a propose to that. But again, right now, it's still a special meeting. That's who we announced it as. So, again, I, I, I think we can hold that one, if you'd like, Mr. Dias.
Sure. I just, literally, just one, I had one, just one question on it, but that's fine. Four, there's information, I have a question just off of some of the discussion today, in turn, a monetary question, and so, I'm just trying to see, do we have an agreement with the city when it comes to water and sewer rates? Because I heard information at the city council meeting, they almost passed a budget that would have took out water and sewer for every single city department except this one. So, I'm just trying to say, and, and the rationale as to why the school department didn't, because we have autonomy over our own budget, they can't touch our budget. So, I'm just trying to think, we could save an additional $500,000 if, you know, we just took the water and sewer money we give to the city out of the budget. And if there's no agreement to do so, I'd just like to get a legal opinion on it. I guess the water and sewer department, they have capital items that would cover the cost, so it wouldn't be a cost on the, on the rate payer, so I think it's something that we should look at and just have a conversation about. And third, this is the last item, actually, I'll, for the sake of the argument I was given, I'll yield.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hagia.
Can someone please enlighten me on what this is, what he's talking about relative to the water and sewer?
Well, what happened with the water and sewer was the city council reduced the rate increase by 1.3 million. So, the city tried to make up some of the 1.3 million they gave back, reduced the water and city costs for the city agencies. It did not in any way, shape, or form impact the school department positively or negatively. It was just an $800,000 turnback from the city to the water department.
So, when my colleague says that the CFO, interim CFO, said every department was going to get no, charge no water and sewer except for the school department? Is that accurate?
She meant city departments.
I know, but we are.
She wasn't talking about the schools.
All right. So, those departments, agencies, or whatever you, I guess, I don't even know what agencies they were talking about, but I guess those are enterprise ones?
They're not all enterprise ones.
But some of them?
I don't, I, water and sewer and trash, I think is it.
Right. So, I, I just think it's.
I don't even know if trash is enterprise. I'm not sure, Mr. Hagia.
But, but if you're charging, do you charge EMS on the city side for water and sewer?
I believe we did.
And EMS is an enterprise fund?
Correct.
And the school department is similarly an enterprise fund?
I didn't know that. I didn't think of the school, I thought the.
I don't think that the city can be picking and choosing which departments are going to pay and which ones are not going to pay. So, I would like to get some sort of legal opinion.
Legal opinion, yeah.
Because it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, just like it didn't make sense that the CFO, interim CFO, went to the city council and said she was going to make up four and a half million dollars in healthcare by coming after the school department in the way we do claims. We still haven't got to the bottom of that comment, but I don't know what the heck she's talking about.
That was, I don't believe, I don't believe she said that.
Oh, yes, she did.
Four and a half million in claims strictly from the school department?
In others, but we're one of the bigger ones.
Oh, oh, oh.
We're not going to get a dime. We, we pay the claims already.
No, it's not, it's not claims. I don't know where that came from.
It came from her mouth. We talked about it, because I asked Mr. Almeida, multiple meetings, we pay the claims here. So, if we're paying the claims here, the person who's so-called in charge of the city finances shouldn't be going to the city council saying, we don't pay claims. There's a major disconnect, and it's a $22 million or more line item. So, we've got to get together between our people and there to figure out what is, what is that? I just have no idea.
I, I think, I think as long as, I've only, I've been here, what, my sixth year, Mr. Hagia, the amount of back and forth in meetings with the school department and the city recently is stronger than I've seen it in a long time, Mr. Almeida. Yes, so I agree, that's a key point. I didn't hear, I didn't hear.
But we would want to know.
The school department's going to pay 22 million in claims.
No, no, that's the total bill, is what I'm saying.
Oh.
So, when the bill is 22 million, but we're paying actual claims, the variance that she's talking about in a public meeting is, and I don't know, because I don't work here all day, every day, but if we're paying the actual claims, there's not variance to a million, million and a half, $2 million. So, what she was talking about in a public meeting, though, gets people concerned, to say, are they going to take more money from the school department? Are we not paying our fair share? I know we're only at 100%, but I, I haven't seen the most recent one, but it's not millions of dollars that you're going to save by coming after the school department. That's all I own.
I agree. Is there a reason to go into executive session, Mr.?
Yes, there would be.
Can I get a motion, a second, before we resume?
Thank you.
I have a motion, a second. Go ahead, meet him.
I could, I could relate what the issues are, Mayor, before the vote.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
National law, chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for June 5, 2025 technology subcommittee meeting. National law, chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for June 9, 2025 regular school committee meeting. National law, chapter 38, section 2181, to review the open meeting law complaint dated May 9, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the former school committee. A meeting was held on March 3, 2025. Since that meeting, the committee has also held meetings on March 10, 18, 19, and April 17 and 29. The complainant alleges that the minutes of the March 3, 2025 meeting have not been approved yet, a violation of the open meeting law. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated May 9, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the former School Committee, uh, holding a meeting on March 10, 2025. Since the meeting, the committee has also held meetings on March 18, 19, 27, and 29, April, April 17th and April 29th. The complaint alleges the minutes of the March 10, 2025 meeting have not been approved on, uh, April 17, 2025, a violation of the Open Meeting Law. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated May 9, uh, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the former School Committee, uh, meeting of, uh, March 18, 2025. Since that meeting, the committee has also held meetings on March 19th, April 17th, and April 29th. The complaint alleges the minutes of the March 18, 2025 meeting have not been approved as, as of, uh, April 29, 2025, a violation of the Open Meeting Law. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated May 23, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the May 23, 2025, response to a request to the former Superintendent of Schools Search Committee Chairperson, Mimi Larrabee, for all open session and executive session minutes in the former School, former Public Schools Superintendent of Schools Search Committee from 2024. The complaint alleges that the chairperson did not publicly announce whether the open session would reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session, and never declared that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified candidates. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated May 23, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the May 23, 2025, request to the former Superintendent of Schools Search Committee Chairperson, Mimi Larrabee, for all open session and executive session minutes in the former School, uh, former Public Schools Superintendent of Schools Search Committee from 2024. The complaint alleges that the School Committee has never been, has never been provided the search committee minutes in their entirely, in their entirety, unredacted to review. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated May, June 3, 2025, filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the June 2, 2025, Special Meeting of the former School Committee. The complaint alleges that the former School Committee violated the Open Meeting Law as follows. One, Mayor Coogan in his capacity as School Committee Chair refused to allow Colin Dias to bring up a matter that was not reasonably anticipated by the Chair 48 hours in advance concerning the newspaper article that appeared in the former Herald News on June 2, 2025. The newspaper article referred to payment of a ransom to recover and unlock the school department's computer system after it had been hacked and locked down, AKA ransomware. And two, entered the executive session for an illegal purpose for compliance with the Students' Recu Law, which is not one of the 10 exemptions that allow executive session. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the Open Meeting Law Complaint dated June 13, 2025, filed by Terry Perry. The complaint alleges that the School Committee members failed to maintain the standards of professionalism, respect, and decorum. The dates of the alleged violations are May 27, 2025, June 2, 2025, and June 9, 2025. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the Department of Labor Relations in the matter of the former School Committee and former Educators Association Unit A, MUP 2511130, as the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement relative to all personnel engaged as certified licensed occupational therapy assistants, physical therapy assistants, speech and language pathology assistants, assistants, licensed practical nurses, social emotional liaisons, instructional, uh, support liaisons, community facilitators represented by the former Educators Association, as the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the former school system represented by the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1118, as the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil, uh, clerical employees of the former school system represented by the former Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including here agreements as well to all paraprofessional employees of the former school system represented by the former Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss complaint brought against a School Committee member. National Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 and Section 21A7, to discuss a pending, uh, settlement agreement, and in order to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and comply with Student Records Law. As the Chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the, uh, negotiating position as well as the litigating position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including all school principals, 18 in number, all Fall River Educational and Fall River Government TV cable grant positions, 8 in number, all non-union central office administrators, 8 in number, all administrative assistants, 11 in number, all school-based athletic program support positions, all facilities and operations supervisory positions, 8 in number, all computer tech, uh, technical and student information management system support positions, 18 in number, all special education support positions, 2 in number, all early education su, support positions, 4 in number. Allison Lowe's redesign coach, James Sullivan, Chief Officer of Special Education Compliance, Stacy, Stacy Gahan, financial manager, Christine Abdo, procurement specialist, Sandra Silva, payroll manager, Melissa St. Pierre, CTE Cooperative Education Coordinator, Kendra Pimental, post-secondary career pathway specialist, Evan Masood, production technician and editor, Debbie Sardina, communication specialist. We would reconvene, the mayor may have your statements at that time.
I have a motion a second. Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Chair? Very, very quick procedural question. On the school-based athletic program support positions, I don't see a number. Like all the others, like, we have a number, like, central office administrators, 8, administrative assistants, 11, um, facilities and operations supervisory positions, 8. For that based athletic support positions, I don't, I don't know if it's required under the law or not.
It's not, but it's one.
This is one position, okay.
You all set, Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Okay.
Who seconded the motion? Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan? Mayor Coogan?
Yes, recess to executive session. Uh, we're back in session. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Present.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Here. Did anything further to come before the committee?
There is, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session minutes for, uh, Monday, uh, sorry, June 5, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Very quick, I'm just going to be voting, just going to be voting no, and my reason as to why, I believe the School Committee should retain more autonomy over and decision-making over what minutes are released to the public, and, uh, as I have mentioned to the committee in the past. I yield.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes, anything further?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the exec, executive session minutes for, uh, June 9.
Second.
2025.
Discussion, hearing none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the maintenance contract as negotiated.
Second.
I have a motion a second, discussion. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so, um, I'm not going to be voting for this contract for, basically for one main reason. Has nothing to do with the, uh, money or the, um, cost of living adjustments. For months now, actually for years, since we, as a committee, voted to do a reorganization, which I was opposed to at the time, of the Maintenance Department, we were told at that time that when we, if we voted for, um, more supervisors, more administrators in the Maintenance Department, that we were going to get rid of all leads that work basically to get, I think, five or $6,000 extra to do not very much. And now we have actually bosses that we hired as administrators, and we still kept the leads. I've asked this administration for several months, and I have emailed back up for all of the requests that I made to address the issue. We, as a body, including the superintendent and her leadership team, all agreed to cut instructional leads across all of our schools. We voted to cut instructional leads at the same time as we all said we were going to cut all leads. But this administration chose not to address the issue with the maintenance contract. So now we're in a situation where we cut instructional leads and we kept maintenance leads, which makes absolutely zero sense to do that. And we are going to do it because we didn't do our due diligence with negotiations the proper way, and I'm very disappointed in the administration for not addressing it. It does not look good for an administration or for a school committee to cut instructional leads with all the instructional issues that we have, but keep a $6,000 stipend for several Maintenance Department leads. It's not acceptable, it looks foolish, it makes no sense, and I'm not going to be supporting it, and we should have addressed the issue, and there's really no good excuse for it other than we didn't do our due diligence as an administration. I yield.
Thanks. Um, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr., Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Maintenance MOA regarding iPads as negotiated.
Second.
Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the M, Maintenance MOA regarding the two-way radios as negotiated.
Second.
Discussion, uh, hearing none. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further to come before the committee?
Yes, I'd...